You are live.
Well, good evening, everybody. This is Tim Terranova, the proud superintendent of the Victor Central School District, and excited to be here on Wednesday, May 20th, our ninth town hall. Since we had to close the school buildings, so I'm glad to have everybody here. Hope we get a big audience tonight because we have a special group of guests that are going to join me at any second, and those are some senior students. They're going to be coming up on the screen in a second. I think we've got four of them right now, possibly five, maybe six eventually, but we definitely have four fantastic people as their faces start to come up on our screen. And we're going to talk a little bit to our seniors. Yep, we got Max coming too. That's awesome. How are we doing, everybody? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Good. What do we Max or Maxwell? I always forget.
I usually do Max.
This is good.
Either it's fine.
The beard looks great, man.
Thank you.
Max missed our little Zoom session yesterday, so I like he's coming on. I'm glad he's here. So we have Kyle. Kyle's a great person. He's definitely into a lot of different things, has given his all through high school, does a lot of work at the BOSI's and the center there around welding and metal and has some great opportunities coming out of 12th grade. Going to talk to us a little bit about that. Love having him here. Kyle, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, awesome. We've got Chloe here. Chloe is a, I'm going to go in this order. High character, great leadership, fantastic athlete, and it's in that order because the character comes first. Phenomenal, just president of DECA, great stuff with, you know, her career, hopefully in softball and basketball, but even more important, she's just a great leader. We have, well, let's talk, where did Max go? Max, how are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Awesome. We have Matt. Now, Max, since I didn't get to ask you this question, just give me a 20 to 30 second highlights. Give me a couple of highlights from your experience of this. Like, what have you been in? I know you're in theater, right? Or musicals?
Yes. Yeah, I've been in the musicals throughout all high school and helping with a lot of behind the scenes stuff. And I'm the vice president of drama clubs, so I work on the daily announcements. I get to read those and then go through the PA system.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and I was in Link Crew and the Masterminds team and a bunch of jazz bands. So a lot of, really, I was focused on a lot of arts and things.
Thank you. Glad to have you here. And then we have Georgia. Georgia is the executive council president for student council. She's also an awesome cross-country and track athlete, also in our DECA program, and we're glad to have her. Hi, Georgia.
Hi. Yep.
Good to see you. And we have Ijoma. Did I pronounce that right?
Ijoma.
Ijoma, sorry about that. Ijoma, one of my favorite people, the president of the senior class for the last three years. Sophomore, junior, and senior, National Honor Society, fantastic basketball, track and field athlete. More important than any of that, though, is, again, has, just like all these seniors do, she has great character and loves to volunteer and do different things. So Ijoma, great to have you.
Thanks for having me.
All right, who did I miss? Anybody? I got Chloe, I got Max, I got Georgia, I got Kyle, right? And then we might be, I don't know where Joseph is. Joseph is supposed to be joining us. He might be here, he might not. And so if he does, we'll just bring him on. So let me ask, they call it the $64,000 question. That's like a basic question. How are all of you doing your senior year? Just say, tell me how you're doing.
As well as we can.
Yeah.
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 Hang in there.
Good, given the circumstances.
Yeah.
What, Kyle, how are you doing?
I'm doing all right, just working my job, you know, just trying to keep busy.
Yeah. So is this the wildest thing you've ever been involved in in your life? One of them?
Yes, for sure.
You know what? If you asked a 53-year-old, they would say the same thing. Hardest part of the pandemic, what would be the hardest part that you're dealing with right now? Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. So for me, obviously, like, missing my softball season has been really difficult, but I think probably the most difficult part for me has been like not being in school, not being around my teachers and my friends and everything. Like, this was like the best part of high school, like your, like spring going into, like, spring of your senior year. It's everything you look forward to. So it's been really hard just not to be in school for me, obviously.
That's definitely, definitely something that, you know, it's got to, it's got to, it's got to be a struggle, you know? Who else?
Um, yeah, I agree with Chloe with, oh, you go, Kyle.
I do agree with Chloe very much, just not being able to see like all your friends and being able to go out and do the normal stuff when it's warming up, like, go out to eat and just do all the normal stuff that you do when it's warming up, especially like this, and not being able to see like your teachers and having your normal schedule.
What do you, or keep going, Max?
Yes, yeah, I do agree. And with, with all the, like, the senior activities that we would have had, it, it's, it's easy to, I mean, it's easy to feel bad about it, but I just like to think that, like, there's millions of seniors that are experiencing the same thing. So like, each of us is not alone in that. But no, I agree, like, just the, just the everyday activities of school with the, like, just the things that we wouldn't appreciate normally. But yeah, I agree.
Anybody else want to talk about, you know, the hardest part of the pandemic?
I was just going to say, missing that sense of closure from high school in the four years and missing like that kind of wrapping it up with being in school and stuff. So that sense of closure, probably.
And then, I guess it's the same, does anybody have a different answer if I ask this? What do you miss the most of your senior year? Is it the same type of answer, or does anybody have a different answer?
I have a similar answer, but just like normalcy is like what I miss the most, just like, you know, going to class, waking up early, which like in the moment, like, is terrible, but now looking back, like, I would like give anything to wake up at 6:30 in the morning and go to school. But yeah, definitely just like normal life that we were like used to before this all happened is, is just what I miss most.
And then?
Yeah, having a routine.
Having a schedule and a routine, definitely.
What were some of the activities in high school that you enjoyed the most?
Being around friends.
Yeah.
Extracurriculars, like, clubs and stuff like that were fun.
Sports. Yeah, sports, yeah. I'll miss Ijoma and I in student council, like, making everybody do stuff. It was always so much fun.
I hear Ijoma is a pretty tough leader. Is that true?
Yes, yes, vicious, but I would, I would not want anyone else to be my president, so she gets the job done.
Thank you.
Uh, Max, and what do you miss the most? And I guess a combo, what do you miss the most? And what are some of the most, you know, like, the great stuff that you did in high school that you really enjoyed?
Well, for me, the theater program was where I, like, met most of my friends and had the most fun. And I think that's the part I miss the most, but, um, and some other schools, like, for us, we got to perform Mary Poppins like a week before.
Yeah.
Like, a lot of this all happened, so that was, we snuck it in there, but a lot of those schools didn't. But just, yeah, just the, the clubs. The clubs were great and just like, just all of the extracurricular stuff really stuck out.
Now, Kyle, you had, you had a really interesting background. You got into BOSI's and vocational education. Can you talk a little bit about that and that awesome experience you had? And when did you, did you start that as a freshman? Or did you start that a couple of years ago?
I started that as a junior, so, and that's a big part of what I missed too is a BOSI's because that's, that was what I looked forward to every day because I didn't, I had like one class at Victor, which was econ. And I don't know, that's what I usually, that's what like my day consisted of was BOSI's. And, and it's a lot of the hands-on stuff, so now that we're at home, we can't really do much of that stuff. I like to go in there and sometimes we'd have to sit in the classroom and do stuff, but most of the time we're getting into the shops and learning new stuff about new machines and learning how to do this and that and the other thing. And it's a lot of knowledge and a lot of stuff that I'm interested in.
So you got a specialty more in the metals and welding and that type of thing?
Yeah, fabrication, basically.
So give me an example of a course you're not able to go to now that you would have been able to if we didn't have the pandemic at BOSI's. What were you taking your?
Well, right now, I should be, right now, I should be in an internship. So the time that I would be spending at BOSI's, I would be spending at one of the, at a shop that I potentially could get hired at after, after the school year. And I would be there, you know, doing what they do, learning how to do what they do and working on those different machines.
And they're, and you're not able to do that, obviously, right?
Yeah, no, because it's because of the liability now.
Yeah. So let's talk, let's, let's think ahead now. We've talked about the negatives, right? We've talked about the challenge that especially you're dealing with as seniors. I mean, what's ahead for all of you? Like, what are you, what are you looking forward to in the summer and the fall?
I'm just looking forward to college, you know, just the new experiences I'm going to face and the new people I'm going to meet. Definitely just the new experiences for me, looking forward to.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'm also excited just to go to college and see that new kind of lifestyle and have things start to go back to normal and kind of get a new routine set up with being at college.
Yeah, I agree with Georgia. Just getting a new routine and everything and, like, I'm looking forward, just like, kind of getting out of my comfort zone and, and, you know, learning new things and being around people that I never met before. So I'm excited just to, like, go into something new and something that I'm not familiar with.
Kyle, you're probably looking forward to what? Get, going to work with that particular company, or you got other plans?
Hopefully, that's what, that's what, that's what my goal is. So they start, they started telling everybody that we can start turning in like, like, can we get an email from the website and turn in like an application and our resume? And then hopefully soon in here, like in a month or two, maybe a month and a half, they can actually start to call us in for actual interviews and internships, hopefully continue what we were supposed to do.
Yeah.
That's, I don't know, I'd like to keep that normalcy of it, but if not, just moving forward with that interest.
Awesome. Max, what are you going to be up to?
Well, college, that is the big thing. And whether, you know, whether online or not, it is like, it's the next step in our lives. But I, I just, I like to see it as that. I like to see it as, you know, just a new thing. And I'm excited to, for like, you know, the, all the stuff on the news to, to be about, like, some good news, you know, as, as the year progresses. But I think, and in the summer, I'm excited to start being able to, like, branch out and start seeing people in person, hopefully.
What did you like most about the high school?
The teachers, I think.
Kyle, nice job.
That was a good one.
That was a good one.
Thank you.
What else?
It was just like the sense of community that the high school brought, like, no matter what grade you're in, like, everyone knew each other. Just like that family orientation, oriented feel in the high school.
That's great.
Yeah, definitely the people I, like, I enjoyed the most. And then also, like, you know, being at Victor, like, I got a lot of experiences that not a lot of kids would be able to have. And, and so I'm very thankful for, like, the things I was involved in, that I was able to do a lot of different activities and, and things like that. But like, the teachers, some of the teachers that I have are just great. And so I'm so glad that, you know, I got to be their student and learn from them.
Yeah, I think there is a lot of opportunities that I was really lucky to be able to have at Victor with, like, different clubs and different classes I could take. But also the teachers were very helpful with anything. And I think being able to, like, stay after with them and know that they really wanted to help me was a really something that really helped me in high school.
Awesome. Okay, so what do we, what do we, I guess, what, what are not, what aren't you going to miss in the high school? Like, is what, what's one thing that either you want to change or you're not going to miss?
Bathrooms.
They are so bad. I would rather not go to the bathroom all day than go to the bathroom.
Yes.
That's cool.
Yeah, yeah. There's like a strategy, like, like you don't.
You can only go to certain ones at certain times.
Yeah.
Definitely certain ones.
Yeah, yeah. Like, you know in your head where you can go.
Yeah. And then like the flush and run because like some like spray up.
Oh, yeah, because they spray.
Yep. Yeah.
Really hot.
Yep.
Oh, how hot it is in the school, yeah.
Do you, do you teach the freshmen about the bathrooms, or do you let them learn it by themselves?
Yeah.
Figure it out. Well, at Link Crew, I think we did tell them certain bathrooms and water fountains to go to at Link Crew. We said, go to this water fountain, this one, don't go to these ones. Because some of them have like hot water in them occasionally.
Yeah.
It's very strange.
Yeah, the foreign language.
By the bathroom.
Randomly, yeah, yep.
I don't, I don't want to know too much. All right, advice, okay, advice for the underclassmen. You've been through an incredible, what, many of you? Well, actually, let's ask, Ijoma, when did you start in Victor? What grade?
I came here sixth grade.
Sixth grade. And Georgia?
Fourth.
Fourth grade. Max?
My whole life.
Whole life. Did you go to pre-k?
Yeah, here, yes.
Wow. Kyle?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. And Chloe?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. So you have a.
Yeah.
Say that again, bro.
I've known Chloe since I can remember. And then Ijoma and Ijoma was my locker neighbor, seventh and eighth grade, and so was Georgia.
I remember that. Sorry. Yes, Ijoma, Kyle and I were locker buddies for two years.
Yeah.
Georgia, what's your dog's name?
Um, I have three, so we have Sky, Winnie, and Molly, and they just started fighting.
All right, that, that's, take care of them, okay?
I'm sorry, you're done now.
No, no, it's all right. So what's the advice you're going to give our underclassmen? What, what advice, after all this experience, then going through this crazy stuff, what, what advice do you have for our underclassmen?
Don't take it for granted.
Yeah, I like live life in the moment, like, don't worry about the drama or anything because, like, tomorrow's a new day and you just.
Y'all know what people think or anything. Yeah, also try to do as many activities you can, like, clubs and stuff.
Yeah.
Sports, even if you don't think you'll be good at it or enjoy it, just try it because there's so many things that I did that I didn't think I would like or stick with that I absolutely loved.
Yeah, like, the cliche is like, you know, goes by fast or whatever, but like, I never knew like how fast it actually was going to go. Like, I remember the beginning of our basketball season. I was like, oh, like, I have like four months of this. And then all of a sudden, we're like losing to Bishop Carney, like, it went so fast. So, yeah. So, so me, I just, like, would just say, like, enjoy it. And there's things that you're not going to enjoy in high school, but like, they're all part of, like, the whole experience. And so, I don't know, just, you know, try and enjoy every moment and, and like, know that it comes to an end.
Yeah, I remember my freshman year, so try to remember it.
You do or you don't?
I don't really remember. I like the, all the years kind of blurred together.
Yeah. It was the only.
I think try to, like, remember them and have, think back on them.
Uh, I can tell you that your freshman year was the only year Ijoma was not the president of your class. Right?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, let's do some shout-outs. Who do you, who do you want to thank and recognize on this broadcast across wherever we are? A lot of the people are watching.
Mrs. Brewer?
Mrs. Brewer?
One of my, one of, Mrs. Brewer was a great mentor for me in music and in life. Just one, yeah.
Mrs. Dunbar and Mr. Merritt.
Say that again, Kyle, just so they can hear.
Mrs. Dunbar and Mr. Merritt.
Awesome.
Um, I would, oh, yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I just want to shout out like all my teachers I've had over the four years, my coaches, definitely Mrs. McManus is one of the main people I'd like to give a shout out to, just helping me through life my senior year has definitely helped. So, Miss McManus, thank you.
Yeah, I would say the same thing, like, all my teachers and coaches, like Coach Smith and Coach Collins, they've been like awesome through this whole, whole thing. And, and for teachers, I would say Taramasu, and that's Sue Watz. She's been like the best, like, I absolutely love her.
What'd you call her?
She's like one, Taramasu, like Sue Watz. Yeah, so, so like she, she's someone that I absolutely adore and have gotten to know really well. So she, she's been someone that's been very special to me throughout high school.
Georgia, did you go?
Um, I did not. I'd say my track coach, Coach Donrow, he's been really great throughout this and just all throughout the time that he's been with us. And then my math teacher this year, Mrs. Knapp, she was very, very helpful for me with my calculus experience, which was a big role for her to have. And so her, and also Mrs. Merges, my freshman year math teacher, I went back to her for math help every year in high school, so I credit most of my math success to her.
Awesome. Anybody, anybody want to shout out one of the elementary teachers that you had when you were here? And I know, Ijoma, you started in sixth grade, but somebody, I think the rest of you started really early. Anybody you remember? I mean, you probably remember a lot of them, but was there somebody that just comes to your mind that, when you were a kid, you really made a difference in your life? Teacher, it could be a staff member.
Mr. Resigliano, he's my sixth grade teacher.
Yeah.
I remember, I remember that year out of all of them. I probably remember that one out of my childhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, for me, I think Mrs. Saunders, my sixth grade year, and then Mrs. Gobro as well, because she came in as a substitute for Mrs. Saunders. Those are my favorites.
Anybody else?
Yeah. I would say Mrs. Osborne. I, I was in multi-age, so I had her in kindergarten and first grade. And like, to this day, like, we, you know, we've talked a lot, and so she, she's really awesome. And I was very lucky to have her be like my first teacher, you know, being at Victor.
That's great.
Um, she's retired now, but my fourth and fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Armstrong, was a really great teacher, and I really loved her.
George, multi.
Georgia and multi.
We are in multi together.
How many years were you in multi? Like, your whole life?
I was kindergarten through fifth. I was just fourth and fifth. Yeah, so Mrs. Armstrong was amazing.
Okay. Um, can I, I'm going to read you, now, I was going to do this in a different way, but I'm going to, so we did a thought exchange, okay? I'm only going to read, we had, I don't know how many we ended up with, I think 60 or 70, and you're going to get a copy of these. The seniors are going to see these. So I basically asked the class, you know, any, any, anything you want to say to the senior class. So let me just read a few of them. Remember, there's like 70 of these, so I'm not, we could go on for 20 minutes. And I told you I'd get you out of here by seven, right? So, so, so let me just read a few of them. This is your time. Choose to move ahead with strength and determination. Focus on what you can do. Stay positive and focused. You got this. Class of 2020, may you remain optimistic in this time of uncertainty. You will be stronger for how you have navigated this challenging time. The path to your future is wide open. May it be filled with adventure, good health, and happiness. Believe in what is to come. Best wishes. So proud of this senior class. You'll be stronger due to this unique experience. Job well done. Live your life, be brave, be strong. You are all loved more than you know. Victor Strong, class of 2020. To the class of 2020, congratulations on all your achievements. Whatever you do from this day forward, do it with love and kindness. Kindness and love are important because it means you put others before yourself, and that is never a mistake. Never underestimate the power of lifelong learning. Maintain a mindset that is open to making mistakes, seeking new opportunities and growing. Your perseverance throughout this time will be an important characteristic in your post-high school journey. Couple more I'll say, I mean, I could read these all day, but pursue your passions. Work will not feel like work if you get to do something you love. The choice is now yours. Life after high school becomes a time when you're able to make more choices for yourself than ever before. Right now, you can choose to use this time to strengthen or tear down. Growth never comes from being in a comfort zone. We are with you and how proud we all are of you and the class of 2020. We must give this class of 2020 a great big graduation at some point. And we can talk about that in a second. And you are an important part of history. You have a strength that is unwavering. Use it to light your way. You will find solutions no one else could. So what do you take? Did you, as you were listening to those, what did you take from it? What do you think people think of you as a group? Don't be shy.
I mean, from that, they made it sound like we're pretty awesome. And I mean, what I take, what I, what I take away from that is just like the sense of community and like how supportive everyone at Victor is, like, no matter if, you know, like, someone knows you or not. I think that, you know, the support that the community's had for the class 2020 especially has been something really remarkable. And like, Victor should be very proud of that.
Yeah, I agree. From like, all those messages, I can just feel like all the support behind the class of 2020, like, our future endeavors.
It's funny.
Yeah, I feel very supported.
That's good. You know, at first I felt bad for the senior class, and I really do actually feel bad for all of you because of what you've missed and had to deal with. But I also take heart in a lot of those comments, and I could read a ton more. They're really, and I've seen this from you. You've really, you know, that perseverance and grit that you've had to deal with, that's going to lead you to many great things as you get older, I think. You, your ability to deal with this change and this uncertainty and do it with a positive attitude, even though there's tough days, that's going to serve all of you well. And I think that was a key message to a lot of those from your teachers and your, your community members. So I'm really impressed with that. So what about graduation? What do you, you have any questions, or what do you want to, what do you want to know about it? Or what are your suggests? I mean, do you know what's going on yet? Tell me what you think is going on.
So we have two options. We either do a recorded one next month, or we wait until the end of July to have a live graduation, which I prefer. But yeah, those are the two.
Yeah. What do you think about that idea at the end of July?
Yeah, it's a really good idea.
I think that one's probably the best out of the two.
Yeah.
And I think all the seniors probably think that as well.
How come you think?
Yeah.
Because like, I don't know, the scare kind of, it kind of scared me too because I really, it's one thing I really look forward to at the end of the, like, school. And it's one thing I've always, I've always remembered thinking about was that moment of walking across the stage and really kind of completing the last 12 years of what I've been doing in school.
Hmm.
I think from the people I've talked to, my friends, I think, they think, they like see things on Zoom now. It's just like kind of a, like a hassle to like have to do. So I think they see the recording option as kind of the easier way out than the more like worth it way.
And what's the worth it way to you, Max?
To, to, for July 30th, I'd say.
So I have to tell, I have to tell you, so I sat in a great meeting today with your principal, Mr. Siesto, and your three assistant principals. And I don't know if you noticed, but they and the staff at the high school are working like crazy to try to figure out a way to get you a great graduation ceremony. And so I know, so first hurdle is June 26. I know they've got some special things planned for you for seniors for June 26. We've got to make sure, however, that we're able to do it, you know, from a health standpoint, from the state. So, and then they've got these incredible ideas for July on the turf field for graduation. But again, we've got to make sure that we're allowed to do it. And it's not going to be, if we can't do that big graduation, it's not going to be for a lack of trying, and it's certainly not going to be because of your administration. It's going to be because, it's going to be because the health department and the state say you can't. And, and if that happens, which I don't know, you know, we got to, I think you got to take it day by day. Everything changes every day. But if that happens, then they've got a couple other ideas they're trying out. And I just, I just wanted to let you know because I sat in this meeting for a while and I've heard them talk, they're, they're working with your teachers so hard. And the teachers want to so badly celebrate you. And so we're going to figure something out. And I just want you to make sure you know that, that the feelings you have around that closure and graduation is exactly the same feeling that your administrators and your teachers and your staff have at the high school. So it's really important. And we're just going to keep talking about it and trying to figure out. But we've got to get permission from people to do that, right? So anything else you want to talk about? Any other comments? I cannot thank you enough for coming on the show with me. I, I called it a show, actually. It's really nice.
It's like a talk show.
It's like, it's like, anybody ever see the movie Wayne's World, by the way? No?
I've heard of it.
You've never heard of it?
I think I've heard of it, but.
Nobody heard of Wayne. That was a huge.
I've heard of it.
It's a very funny movie.
You watched it, Kyle?
Yeah, I've watched it.
All right, Kyle, you know what? I have a lot of respect for you. Not that I don't have it for everybody else. They had like their own TV show. Not that I don't have it for everybody else. They had, they had like their own TV show. This isn't really a TV show. This is a town hall. So sorry about that. Anyhow, um, I wanted to thank everybody. Know that you're all leaders. And, uh, I just think I am so excited to see, I, I'm, I'm, it's hard for me because I don't even know you really well. I mean, you're the class that I'm gonna know the least, yet I'm never gonna forget this class because you will never be forgotten for the fact that you had to deal with this situation and you didn't such, did it in such a positive way. So, thank you for everything you're doing and we're gonna definitely stay in touch. Make sure you get whatever we can do to make sure you get a great send off, okay? And, uh, stay connected to each other, right? It's really important. Oh, one other thing. If you're eighteen, vote. Right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not only, what else can you do around register? Obviously you can get other people to vote who are eighteen and older too, right? Right. Register to vote and vote. And guess what? This year it's online. Or actually not online. It's a mail vote. You're gonna print it out. They're gonna mail it to, it's not online. You gotta go online to register, but then you're gonna mail in your vote. Okay? Awesome. Thank you for coming on the show. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Isaac's gonna let you go. Have a great evening. I'm gonna keep talking because I wanna talk a little bit about the last day of classes as well as the budget. So thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
See you later. So, uh, what a fantastic group of seniors. You couldn't ask for a better group. And, uh, we just be thinking of them because they have such great attitudes and they represent another, you know, three hundred and forty kids that are, uh, that are dealing with this challenge. Uh, wanna talk for a second about the end of the school year and then I wanna talk about our budget a little bit. Um, in terms of the end of the school year, I wanna double check here. We got, uh, June sixteenth is gonna be the last day for students kindergarten through twelfth grade. June sixteenth is gonna be the last day for kids virtual learning. So you're gonna be, uh, working with your teachers on classwork until the sixteenth. Uh, that means that you need to get all your work done by the end of the sixteenth for the work to count. And I know your teachers are gonna be working with you on that. Let's see. Uh, it might look different in terms of the work, obviously, between elementary and the, uh, secondary level. But you're gonna get a lot more information from your building principal as well as your teachers around that last day. So June sixteenth is gonna be the last day for kindergarten through twelfth grade. And, um, you know, after that, it's gonna be a quick shift into making sure our, our, whatever type of, uh, grading in terms of the pass or incomplete is done, making sure you get your transcripts all set up. And then, uh, like I said earlier, we're gonna do whatever we can to have a great send off, uh, for our seniors. So that's one thing about grading. If you have further, or not grading them, the end of the year, if you have further questions around the end of the year, I suggest you call your school, email your teacher or your counselor or your high school or secondary elementary principals to, uh, to get more information. But that is gonna be June sixteenth. I have to give a shout out to a junior. I talked to Georgiana, uh, Georgiana, it was a couple of days ago. Georgiana and I did a quick Zoom session for about fifteen minutes. What a fantastic young adult. She's a junior at the high school. She's doing a great job. And what an incredible character this young lady has. So I wanna say thank you to Georgiana for, uh, talking to me and giving me some insight on things. And I also wanna shout out to her mother and her grandfather, who I believe at least her mom and Georgiana are watching tonight. So I, the great news about Georgiana is she's back with us next year as a senior. So, uh, hope to have lots of conversations with her. Uh, so let's talk a little bit about the budget. I do wanna go over a couple things for a few minutes. I'm going to, um, share a couple slides with you. Uh, it's about seven oh four. So this will take a few minutes and then, um, I will try to answer some questions. If I don't get to questions on the, uh, Facebook Live, we will answer questions by Friday. I'm gonna be perfectly transparent. I didn't get the questions answered by this last Friday. That was my fault. We did answer them by yesterday, but I promise this week we're gonna get those answers into Facebook by Friday. Now, in terms of the budget, you all know that, um, we have, uh, what's called a revenue issue with our budget, right? We have, uh, we're struggling with having enough revenue to support our expenses. And a lot of that has to do with, uh, losses of state aid that we're entitled to have that we don't. Uh, it also has to do, and that's a combination with increasing enrollment. And it has to just do with the fact that, um, we've been trying to survive on budgets that budgeted at about ninety-nine percent for expenses. What does that mean? That means that we have very little money left, if any, to put into savings or to save or to use for emergency services. So for the past few years, if we equate it to a homeowner, and I've used this example many times, the last few years, the Victor District has been budgeting paycheck to paycheck, similar to a home, uh, would or a, a, a household might have to do if they're struggling, uh, with their revenue. And of course, that's a, that's a, unfortunately, a good example for right now because many people are struggling in this economy. So what happens when you budget paycheck to paycheck is you're struggling to find enough revenue to support your expenses. And that leads to a couple things. It leads to one, a few times needing to dip into your savings, which the Victor District had to do. They, we had to use our savings for a few years to pay for our expenses, which would be like a homeowner, uh, using their, uh, uh, long-term savings to pay for the groceries every once in a while. It's not meant to do that. And, and this district has had to do that with their reserves and their savings, which has shrunk those reserves down to minimal levels. In addition, when you're going budget to budget or paycheck to paycheck and your budget is, is basically the same in terms of expenses and revenue, you're not able to really plan forward to support staff needs as much as you'd like to. Which leads to a variety of areas of understaffing, which is what we have here in Victor Central School District. We know that we are understaffed in multiple areas and we've said them multiple times, you know, from safety and security. Uh, you heard the high school seniors talk about the bathrooms at the high school. That's no fault of any of our cleaning staff or the administration of the teachers at the high school. That's because you have one cleaner on the entire day and most of the time that cleaner has to be in the lunchroom. So those bathrooms don't get touched between seven thirty in the morning and four in the afternoon. That's, that's why that's been said. Uh, technology integration, uh, we lack. Social emotional support of our ki, of our kids, we're still lacking in those areas. Um, and so you have a budget that's extremely tight. Um, you, you, you barely have enough money to pay for your expenses. And many times you have to dip in your reserves to pay them and then you end up with understaffed areas as well. At this point in our history of Victor Central School District, we don't have enough money to pay for next year's expenses now. It's not just paying for your groceries once in a while. Now, we're pretty much needing to use our savings if we had them to pay for significant amounts and we don't have those savings. So that is why for next year, the board has adopted a budget that exceeds the tax cap to get enough money to pay for the existing staff that we currently have in this district. Uh, plus six positions, all of which are mandated, which would be, I think, three special ed positions, two ELL positions and one high school counselor, which is a, a significant need, uh, at the high school. So I'm gonna put up a slide here. Hopefully you're gonna be able to see this. So we're in that situation. That's, that's why we're in this situation. We have, we don't have enough money to spend on next year's budget. Our next year's budget is, uh, is under budgeted by over three million dollars. The budget proposal, as you've heard, uh, numerous times, we're looking at a six point one four percent increase budget to budget. And by the way, that's a smaller increase from last year's to this year's budget. Uh, that equates to a nine point three four percent levy increase and we're projecting, because we don't know this for sure yet, we're projecting a tax rate of approximately seven point eight percent increase. We're again over the tax cap by three point three eight million dollars. And it's important slide to see, again, this is to maintain staff and add six positions uh, that are critical and mandated right now. It's not addressing other areas. And you can see how the increase from the monthly and the annual, so for a three hundred thousand dollar house, if you have basic star, you will end up with a, an increase of three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the year, twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents for the month. Um, and that's our situation right now. What, what happens if it's successful? If the budget is successful, you'll see here, uh, remember our tax, our per pupil expenditure, actually, I'll go to the right side, is the least, uh, per pupil expenditure of the entire state of New York. If we have this increase in budget that we current, that I just said, that per pupil expenditure will go to approximately eighteen thousand dollars a student, which is still significantly lower than the Monroe County, Wayne County, Ontario County average. If, uh, the same case in terms of true value tax rate, we, our tax rate would be above seventeen dollars from the fifteen dollars and ninety cents. But you can see there's still almost a two dollar gap between that particular, uh, tax rate and the average tax rate in Ontario County. And that's if the tax rate doesn't increase at all in Ontario County next year, which most likely it will. Significantly less than Wayne County and, and even more significantly less than Monroe County. So even with this increase, and I'm not diminishing the amount of money that taxpayers need to spend, but even with this increase, it will still be significantly smaller in terms of our per pupil expenditure and our tax rate than any district around us. And if we're not able to, um, get the tax increase, which means we need a sixty percent approval vote to pass this budget. So if we do not get a sixty percent approval rate, then, uh, and we end up, the board ends up at the tax levy increase, which is one point nine percent instead of nine percent. Uh, we're gonna have to cut three point three million dollars worth of, uh, programs and people. And it's programs and people because this budget is so thin that ninety-five percent or more of it is on mandated items. We don't have a choice. That when we have to cut three million, uh, dollars, it cuts significantly into, uh, critically important things for our kids. So, um, in terms of what those reductions are, and of course, we had a philosophy around this. This has been recommended to the board in case this happens. Uh, we're gonna cut a total unfortunately of twenty-one point six teachers. That includes six teachers that are going to be replaced by all of our mentor, by our mentors, instructional coaches and enrichment teachers. We're gonna go back in the classroom. That's really tough on two, two areas. One, uh, we lose our teacher leadership that helps teachers teach better and learn and improve and collaborate with one another. That's gonna take a huge hit. And of course, it's going to knock out our least senior teachers based upon seniority rules who are, who are phenomenal. So we're also gonna cut five sections, which is gonna significantly increase, which will increase, I'll say, I'll say it this way, it'll increase class sizes from, uh, twenty and twenty-one at the elementary level to twenty-three to twenty-five. And it'll increase secondary level classes, which I'll get to in a second, into the mid twenties. Obviously some will be lower, but some, many will be higher than twenty-five. Secondary, we're replacing, we're gonna have standards leaders go back to the classroom. We're also going to eliminate eight point two positions in phys ed, ELA, math, social studies, science, business, student support services. That's gonna unfortunately hit two areas, class sizes at the high school and the junior high school and course offerings um, at the high school. We'll get to that in a second. In addition, to get the money that we need to save, which is over three million dollars, we're gonna unfortunately need to, to cut all of modified sports and all the coaches that, uh, coach those modified sports. And in addition to that, because the cost of the swimming pool is not significant in terms of the structure, right? I think it's, uh, for an average taxpayer, the cost of that swimming pool because of the capital project is seventeen dollars a year for, for a taxpayer. So the cost isn't so much in the structure. The cost is in the su, supporting the staff, especially the lifeguards, because guess what? Uh, we use that aquatic center from dusk till dawn, actually past dawn. I mean, all sorts of groups and all sorts of people. So that's a, that's a cost that we'd unfortunately have to recut completely. So we would close the aquatic center, uh, which would mean no aquatic center, no phys ed swimming, um, and no varsity or JV girls or boys swimming. Uh, because that aquatic center is a, is, has a cost to it. And in fact, we'd have to save more money by draining the pool, which would save us an additional sixty thousand dollars. Uh, we would also reduce our data coordinator manager as well as K-12 teacher leaders, which again are very important to the running of the school and supporting the administration, which is already, um, the least staffed administration of any district in this area. Uh, public relations staff, uh, could potentially be gone. Um, we're adding a high school counselor. Unfortunately, we would have to reduce two psychologists, one a K-12 psychologist position and one a, a full-time intern that helps out tremendously. So, uh, that is a, a student mental health and social emotional support reduction that's going to be very difficult to deal with. Special area teachers will be reduced. In art, music and physical education, their class sizes will increase, especially at the elementary level because we won't have as many sections because we won't have as many elementary sections. In addition, we're gonna cut four teacher aid positions. Um, and I believe those are people that are already, uh, leaving the district. Uh, and then the big one too, teacher stipends, another significant savings that we have to go to to save mandated programs would be clubs and extracurricular activities. Um, all clubs, all extracurricular activities, K through twelve would be cut, um, which would again save a significant amount of money. So what are the consequences of that? Hopefully you can see this. You know, again, I talked about some of these. The aquatic center would be eliminated, physical education, swim program and swim team would be eliminated. Uh, advanced placement and elective course reductions. I'll, I'm gonna, I actually have a slide in there. I just wanna highlight that. Curriculum and teacher leadership reductions, a governance support instruction. All of our enrichment programs at the K-six level would be, have to be eliminated to save cost. Facility usage, uh, I'll get that. So facility usage, which be a, we, we have a significant fee structure implemented for all outside groups as well as, as I just mentioned, modified athletics would be eliminated uh, in seventh and eighth grade and ninth graders who play modified in the ninth grade level. So what does that do to a, for an eighth grader? I, you know, if you're an eighth grader and you're, for example, in the band, okay? Um, or the, or, or, or the, you know, another club like Deco or something, and you're really interested in that, you can't do that anymore because that club is gone. So if you're in the band, you're in eighth grade, you can't do that. So you wanna play soccer, but you can't play soccer because modified soccer is eliminated. So you might wanna join youth soccer, right? Well, youth soccer is gonna have a question mark because now they're gonna have to pay for the facilities to use during the youth soccer season. They may choose to use it, but then expenses will go significantly up for parents. Or they may choose to use a different facility or they may not be able to run a program depending on the cost. So that poor eighth grade kid has gotta have to deal with, uh, walls and blockages left and right. They wanna do one thing, they can't do another thing, they can't do another thing. And that is incredibly unfortunate in terms of eliminating opportunities for our kids. So that gets into, uh, uh, student clubs elimination, musicals, plays, the Suzuki Strings Program would be eliminated, which is a great program at the primary level. We would also have to significantly reduce our UPK program. And unfortunately, there's parents who are already signed up for that UPK program. And, um, some of them, not all of them, but some of them would have to, uh, find, uh, pre-K programs elsewhere if any are available because we wouldn't be able to afford all of our pre-K. So these are the significant hits that a three, over a three million dollar reduction uh, has an effect on a school this comprehensive as Victor Central School District. Uh, just one more example of this. If you just look at high school courses, because of those reductions of teachers, we're cutting courses such as Theory of Knowledge, Journalism One, Journalism Two, Leadership, Creative Writing. We're cutting AP Environmental Science, Microbiology, Chemistry Insights. We're cutting AP Government Law, Sociology, Twentieth Century History, uh, AP Statistics and Mathematics, Computer Science One, Computer Science Two. So that's roughly, uh, let's see, eighteen or nineteen courses. Uh, that means that larger chunks of kids are gonna have less opportunities to have a comprehensive education, much more studyalls instead of electives. And unfortunately, our kids who are involved in APs will still have lots of APs to take. Uh, where I believe we're eliminating three of them. But, uh, at this point, uh, they're not gonna, those are three very important APs and, and these electives are opportunities for kids to get involved in things. As you heard our high school students say earlier, which, you know, was spontaneous. The things they loved the most were the things that, that got them involved in these types of experiences, whether it's courses like this or clubs or athletics. And unfortunately, those will be gone. And that takes a big hit in terms of a comprehensive education as well as potentially, you know, trying to get kids into colleges of their choice because these are courses that would help that. So, uh, that's the bad news in terms of this budget. I will show you again real quick. What we're proposing is this. You can look at that. Why, I guess a question I've heard many times is why are we doing this now? Why in the, in the middle of a pandemic where there's economic disaster around us, are we asking for such a tax? Are we asking for such a tax increase? And that's a completely legitimate question. And I really, I would, I would answer that in three ways. First and foremost, because we do not want to reduce our programs in Victor Central School District. And the only way we have available right now to keep our staff, uh, the way, the way it is and to keep our programming is to go out at this, uh, tax rate and tax levy to maintain our existing staff. Another reason to do it, which, which is, uh, it's really, um, a result of this is we also are, are, are pretty, pretty positive that we want to keep staff and not cut twenty-five to thirty-five people. Uh, people are being reduced out of their jobs all over the area. We understand that. And you know what? It's not going to help us if we reduce our own staff and put those people, uh, some of our greatest teachers and staff members out and not being able to do their jobs here. So we want to protect our staff because it protects our program. And lastly, we are, remember, we are not addressing the understaffed areas that we talked about before. We're still going to have one cleaner at the high school and we're going to have to figure out what to do with that as well as the other four buildings as we return hopefully with the COVID situation and the sanitizing needs. We're still not going to have security and safety, uh, people. We're still going to have, um, very sparse technology integration. So those are areas that we are decided not to address because we can't and do not feel it would be right to go out to the community. The board does not feel right to go out to community with a higher tax rate, a higher tax levy during this time. Um, what does that mean? That means that we're going to really need to plan together collaboratively as a community moving forward. If we are successful with this budget vote, uh, we're going to plan forward strategically plan. And we're going to need to look ahead because we are going to eventually need to right-size our staff in multiple areas. At the same time, I can promise you a couple of things. We're going to do it strategically. Um, we're going to do it with input. And the other thing I can say is if we need to increase staffing, which we do over the next three to five years, we are still going to have one of the smallest, uh, per pupil expenditures and tax rates of any district in this area, if not the smallest. We're not looking at jumping ahead to districts, um, and I'll move this slide, see if I can do this. We'll move that slide over. We're not looking to jump ahead of the Ontario County average in the next three to five years. We're looking though, to strategize and plan forward uh, so that we can have the right size staff to keep the comprehensive program that we have here. That's really what this is about. It's, it's, it's a community decision that has to be made. And we want all community members to have that input. And I can tell you, you know, um, I know that, you know, there's, I don't know, one or two, a handful, maybe one or two people that are, that are probably on the fringe, you know, that, um, that either, uh, are attacking certain things or, uh, not listening to facts. And that's maybe one or two people and I understand that. And, uh, those types of people are always there. Um, and I think people are, I know people are intelligent enough to know, you know, what's accurate and what's not. But there's a whole other group of people that are really struggling with this decision because they have to struggle with it based upon their economic situation. There's a lot of people out there, um, that, that may, may vote no on this, not because of anything else, but because they can't afford it. And I get that. I understand that that might be the case for many of you. And so we appreciate that and respect that opinion. I guess that what I would ask everybody to do is be as informed as possible. Um, make sure that you read the literature and understand the facts and know that, um, know that we are going to strategically plan forward with multiple stakeholder input. And I know that sounds cliche, but we're going to involve people to prioritize what our district is about. And really, uh, ultimately then you got to make that decision as a community. Because if this budget doesn't pass, Victor Central Stu- School District is going to look significantly different than it does now. And it's going to look significantly different than every school around us in terms of its ability to offer programming for kids. And that is a, that's, that's what the community has to decide in the next three weeks. So from a voting standpoint, we want everybody's vote to count. Uh, let me move this past here and tell you, here, let's go to this slide. We want everybody's vote to count. Uh, make sure you register. Now we've, we've suggested people to register by May twenty-second. Uh, that's a suggestion. You can still register after that. But we really encourage you to go to the DMV website and register there. Because then in about twenty-four to forty-eight hours, we think that'll be transferred over to the Board of Elections of Ontario County. You'll be on the registered vote, uh, roll and then you will receive a ballot. All registered voters will receive ballots at the end of May. And then you need to return your ballot preferably by mail, uh, by five PM June ninth. And, uh, every voter in your home, every eligible voter should get a ballot. So if you're an eligible voter, uh, and you don't, do not get a ballot in your home, please, uh, contact our board clerk at the email address that is on this document. Um, and again, we want everyone to vote and everybody to weigh in because this is going to be a community decision. If you register late, which we're not encouraging you to do, uh, we suggest you call our board clerk or email our board clerk to make sure, uh, she knows that you've registered. So you get on that registered list, uh, the voter list so that you can ultimately vote. So, uh, that's, that's a brief piece on the budget. And again, I'm sorry to have to talk about some of the reductions or all of the reductions. It's that significant and we just want to be transparent with people of where we're headed. I know there's a ton of comments on here that I'm probably not going to get to right now. But we are, like I said, going to answer as many questions, if not all the questions that we can by Friday. We really thank the seniors for being on. What a fantastic group. Uh, we're going to continue to have more information on our senior celebrations. Again, the last day of school is June sixteenth for students K twelve. Uh, and, uh, next week is an important town hall. Next week is the May twenty-seventh and it will be the budget hearing. So I gave a quick snippet of slides. Mr. Schicklin, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and I will present, uh, the total budget picture a week from tonight. Uh, we again, will have it through Facebook Live. You'll be able to, uh, have questions and comments. Uh, we're also going to have a thought exchange over the weekend and then early next week about our budget to get, uh, your feedback and try to answer as many questions as possible. So you're as informed as possible. That's a lot of conversation. Um, I really, uh, again, most importantly of all of this, take care of each other. Take care of yourselves. You've heard our seniors say over and over again, they love this community. They feel loved by this community. Keep doing that for all our kids. Stay healthy, stay safe and, uh, let us know if you have any questions or concerns. Have a great evening and take care.